Yeah.
All right, very good. I think we're good. Ready?
Call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. The United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, one empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Here.
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 All right, everybody had their packets, so you should have the consent agenda in front of you. Regular minutes from the 14th of March, vote slip management agreement and accounts payable. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Dean, second by Stanton. Any questions, comments regarding any of those items? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 All right, have staff reports in front of us. We have Chad on the line for Scott Herbert representing DPW and Lieutenant Enstfield for the police. Any questions or comments about any of the staff reports?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, good evening, everybody. A lot of good, exciting information in Ryan's report, especially the new monitors from speaking from the north side of the table. Can't wait for the view over there. That'll be very nice. Also, too, a good mention about the AT&amp;T Cellular, so some pretty good progress being made there. So I'm assuming council will see a detailed proposal like we saw for Verizon.
You will.
Do we have a timeline on Monday?
We do not.
Okay. All right. Also, too, thanks again for including the ethical statement of policy. It's almost 20 years old, so much has changed since that was first put in place. It would seem to me that we'd probably be something we want to revisit as a council at some point because I know the state's been active in that area and we learned at our training last week. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunities, I think, for us to be more transparent. So I just, I'd like to put that on the table for council to perhaps take some time to look at that.
Okay, other comments? All right, just wanted to note for DPW, talk to Scott today and put it on your calendars to mark May 2nd and 3rd for the spring cleanup. They had the dumpsters out and they came by and picked up around the, which was very successful last year, so to keep that in mind. Lieutenant Sfield, anything to report?
No, not, not much. We did go through the safety, safety things with the school and that went real good. Both Douglas Elementary School and High School both went through the Strigo training again, a refreshment. We were, are seeing them in their site safety plans and so forth, but, and also they are sending one of their educators to the training also, so they'll have them be in-house. But other than that, hopefully it warms up soon.
All right, very good. Anything else? Any other questions for staff, Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, on the planning and zoning report, good evening, Cindy. I noticed there was a DPW violation notices. Is that something you can just maybe make a, take a moment to explain what that is?
Yes, the BSNA software that we use for our permits and code enforcement has a module that allows us to do code enforcement right on BSNA. And quite a long time ago, I made an agreement with Scott that if somebody needed to get a violation notice, that I would do the recording of that, the printing and the tracking on the BSNA software module, so it makes it easier for him. And it's not difficult for me to process that through the BSNA software.
Thank you. Also, I have a question on the DPW report. Hi, Chad, good evening. Appreciate the city staff notifying us that they've installed new decking on Wick's Park City Docks. That was something the city council had discussed back when we were talking about the agreements for the year. So I appreciate, thank you very much. Also, if you have not been up to see the new Oval Beach sign, I was out there yesterday, and thank you, Councilman Becken, for making that topic. It looks really nice, really nice upgrade. If you have not looked at it, I would suggest doing so. And also want to thank city staff for getting the U back into the Sagittuck palette side, so.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep, you put the U in Sagittuck. Thank you very much.
Problem.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I've got one question under the engineering report. Ryan, when were you planning on bringing the council discussion on the extension of the paving on Butler Street that is mentioned in, in the report?
I do plan on bringing that to council at the next meeting.
At the next meeting workshop, which is prior to the April 12th planned date of paving. Yeah, okay, all right. And if I may throw out, I think I sent you an email, similar situation exists at the four-way stop at Francis and Butler.
Yeah. Bring that up.
And you may want to just, you know, peruse it, see if it's something that you can piggyback on, too. Sometimes you get some economy and savings, you know, that when they're all mobilized and they're coming, or they can squeeze it in or not, but.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I was going to mention that as well. So it's probably a good opportunity to look at some of the other major intersections that could use some attention.
So that one's really bad, as is the one in front of the city restroom. Okay, thanks a lot.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks, Mark.
Anything else? All right, yeah, I think that's discussed somewhere later, as far as, I think in the, that we mentioned that in one of the reports, as far as the, any alternative for additional paving.
I think Mark is referring to expanding some of the repaving that we're doing on Butler Street.
Yeah.
A little bit beyond the scope that we're contemplating currently, so.
Very good. All right, if not, we'll move on. Any agenda changes? I don't have any. Yep, we're going to add Dean capping as a guest speaker. That'll be our agenda change. Other than that, all right. Let's join us.
Are you still online, questions?
Is he?
He only responds to lieutenant. Just kidding.
I was just looking through my notes and I saw, and I saw Brett, that a contract has been successfully negotiated with Body 3 Camera Solutions. So I don't know, I'd love to hear about it, Brett, if you analyzed it, but I know that that contract was negotiated. It should be deployed in June, and I know I read a little bit on it, Brett, I don't know if you just had information on it, but for the liability sake of the officer for the city, it's a great thing to have. So I'm thankful that all the officers will have them by June. I just came back from a Met Conference where all the commissioners in the state of Michigan go to Conference in Lansing, and the big topic was obviously broadband. The person from the state came, and what I didn't realize from that is that they're allowing 25% of ARPA funds to be used for broadband. And, but they haven't even picked the people to be on the panel to decide the funds that are coming down from the feds, where it's going to go and how it's going to be distributed, you know, so just, just to make sure for your group to go, wait a second, for any water issues that we have, I met for the first time with our water study group this past week, and that topic was, it's such a huge topic as far as where do you even go with it? You know, as far as what are the, you know, 20-year, 30-year, 40-year, 50-year range needs as far as the community, how far, how big will expand? And then really, what's the water underneath you? And what should we do as a bigger picture to that, you know, for the county? So we're looking at that. But just to alert you that with broadband, with water, anything that your group would have, make sure you, you cycle that information now, not later, as far as to go, what should we do about it? Then the big topic amongst, I mean, all the commissioners, they had cybersecurity. Every county was there. I mean, they just packed it out. They had some expert there that was, that just went on and on about all the hacks that are happening within cities, townships, that, just the alert to go, I don't know what cybersecurity you have for your systems here, but I know we're double checking ours, we're, we're, we have some experts coming in just to analyze what we're doing and how we're doing it, just to caution that. And then, just lastly, we just have a new inmate tool, and we had so many calls coming in, is my friend here? Is my loved one here? Now they can just go to a website, it's, it will be, you know, real time, just from the website, he is in our jail. So at least that new solution is there and that's available to people. But I just wanted mainly say broadband water, if you've discussed it, try to discuss it. So there's anything you can, that I could push for you, and in regards to that, I'll gladly do that, because the money's going to be coming down, and I think the, the House just picked the people to be on that panel. So I think some movement's going to happen, but we'd be on top of it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Any comments or questions for our commissioner? I just want to say it's really nice to see you so often. I think you're kind of on a once-a-month rule now, or so. It's nice. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
All right, we're at public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to step up and introduce yourself and your place of residence, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Just my periodic and very short this time, a summary of the fireboard, most recent fireboard meeting, which was on the 21st of March. Just a few things, and Jamie put in your packet three consecutive photographs of the fire out on Old Alleghanon, whatever date that was earlier this month. I wanted to make one point on that, which was that in the second photograph, the individual you see well forward of the fire truck, which is, this, those were dash cam, is a dash cam video, those screenshots were taken from, was Mike Betts, Captain Mike Betts, who is absolutely fearless. And, I mean, he, he was the one that put the cannon on the truck in play and was immediately out there with a hose, and, I mean, right up here to that wall from the fire, which was a spooky fire. One other, this relates to the fireboard meeting. Chief Janik mentioned toward, as we looked at other photographs related to that incident, that, and they showed photographs, which I didn't have for this, of two rooms inside the house, one of which looked like it had been decorated with charcoal. I mean, the whole room, every ceiling, walls, all four walls that you could tell, inside of the door, all totally burnt. The other room had virtually no damage, and it was because the other room, the door was closed. And Greg said, it's the most overlooked safety precaution for fire at night, or when you're going to be away for a week or a month or whatever, close the doors, all the interior doors to the interior rooms. So I share that only because he shared it. Other things on the fireboard agenda, we approved $148,098 and change for the monthly bills, the financial report, whatever, we are almost 80% or better through our year. We were on budget in every major, maybe every breakdown. Two noteworthy events, again, related to the caliber of the, of the, of the chief and his people out there. Chief Chan is going to be representing the International Association of Fire Chiefs with, in, in a meeting where they, where they were the International Residential Code Development Authority, whatever they are, holds hearings on updating that code or whatever. It's a fair honor to be asked to be, to be part of that with the fire chief's perspective. And the other one is the Alleghan County, sorry, Dean's gone, Alleghan County Safe School Network Executive Group, to which Chief Janik was also appointed. The safe schools, obviously relating to a host of emergencies. And then I think finally, just not a huge deal, but the, the new fire engine that is on order and not due to arrive until next year, sometime if I'm not mistaken, the supplier, one of the major suppliers has encountered, like lots of suppliers of things, significant cost overruns related to supply chain difficulties, whatever, and there's been some appeal to, to the fire district, fire department out there to consider helping with that. We are not obliged, our contract is with an upstream company, and that contract was a fixed-price contract. So we're not obliged to do it, but when you get, when it comes to firefighting equipment, replacement, this one, or the next one, or the next one, your, your options are limited. The company that we use is in South Haven, so. Anyway, that's it. If there are any questions, let me know.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else online? Jamie? All right, very good. Thank you so much. We'll move on. We have no introductions of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business, and just to remind folks online, Wendy was here the other day, so she knows we had quite a good discussion about this, all these items at the workshop on Wednesday. So for folks who are online, if it seems like we're scooting through these rather fast, is that we had quite a good discussion about it Wednesday. So with that, first item, Sagittuck Historical Markers Project, location approval.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item's on page 27, and you have your sample motion. As you just mentioned, you discussed this at your workshop.
All right, very good. I know we have Eric on the line. Was Eric, did I see him?
Yeah.
Yeah. Eric, you have anything you want to add before we move on this?
No, I thank the council for the discussion we've had over the last couple of months and for the discussion at the workshop, and thank you for your support.
All right, very good. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, motion to approve the presented locations for the Sagittuck Historic Markers Project, including the new location in Wick's Park, where the existing trash can is, and the new location in Cook Park on the northern side of the Cook Park sidewalk near Water Street, as marked on the attached drawing.
All right. Second. Motion by Stanton, second by Gardner. Any questions, concerns, or additional items on this that we haven't already? All right, with that, Madam Clerk, or no, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Second up, we have special event application for the Sagittuck Center for the Arts Public Art Installation at the Sagittuck Douglas History Museum in Mount Baldhead Park.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is on page 39 of your packet. Discuss at your workshop, we do.
It is, it's up here.
Yep, I have a recommended motion.
All right, very good. Do we have anybody from the SCA?
Didn't see Kristen.
I didn't either. All right, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the special event application from the Sagittuck Center for the Arts for a quad community art installation at the Sagittuck Douglas History Museum with an installation date of 5/31/22 and a takedown date of 9/9/22.
All right, motion by Leo. I have a second, please.
I'll second her.
All right, motion by Leo, second by Dean. Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so as I was looking at, I was over at Baldhead yesterday, and was also looking at the information that was presented. A couple of things that come to mind, one is there's 10 total installations, and I think we discussed at the workshop last week, is that we wouldn't suggest that they not put the two near the docks, because that could interfere with fishermen, as well as people that might want to bring their kayaks or canoes up on the, there's the increasing size of the beach down there. So I'm wondering if we're going to see if that's going to be part of the final agreement, is to not include those two installations, because the map, or the, the chart that was included still includes those. Number two is unlike the installation at Coughlin Park, I don't think we saw a graphical representation of what the scale of these might be in comparison to the park, and given the divet, the dimensions of the waves of windows, they're 14 feet tall by 20 feet wide, they're going to be significant over there in terms of space and so forth, and I would be interested in maybe tabling this motion to see some graphical representation of how this is going to actually look in terms of the size and scale in the park. It's a much smaller park than Coughlin. There's also some DPW concerns, I think, in terms of maintenance of some of the areas over there, in terms of where they have these installed. I don't know if DPW would actually weighed in on those yet or not. If they did, great. I just think that the scale of what's being proposed, they're beautiful, beautiful installations, but I think the scale, I'm a little concerned about the scale after having gone over there now and taken a look at it more in sense of what we're actually seeing here.
So Kristen Armstrong at our workshop agreed that two of the installations would not take place. The one closest to the dock that has the fishermen and on the water portion of that, she said that at the workshop, that those two installations would be removed. I know it doesn't reflect that in our packet, but she did say that at our workshop. And then I'm just really looking forward to more public art in our community. I think it's an amazing thing. The Sagittuck Center for the Arts has, you know, led the way for theater and film and, you know, various things at the Sagittuck Center for the Arts, and it's really nice to see these public art installations, like put Sagittuck in a new space as far as that's concerned. So I do trust that, you know, we're getting rid of those two that were by the fishing dock and in the water area. She said she would get rid of those areas. So that's just what she said at the workshop. Hopefully, that will reflect in what they plan on doing.
And I know you made note of that.
Yeah, and I, I would just piggyback onto what Lauren said. I mean, this is part of the brand, this is who we are. This project for the SCA is elevating everyday objects to connect with the physical, natural environment. I think it's important in public art to try new things, even when there's discomfort. I'm really afraid that we've sort of gotten behind the ball when it comes to public art. This is something we haven't done aggressively in, in a few years, and, you know, I know most of us, when we go to Chicago, we go to Grand Rapids, we go to Detroit, we see murals, we see different programming, art prize, and I, I think we need to, even though these things might make us a little bit uncomfortable, we need to try, and, you know, we can, we can adjust accordingly, but I, I just think this is really core to who we are, and making the arts accessible out in the environment is a really important endeavor to support.
Madam Mayor, I, I think the SCA has shown a, a level of care, professionalism, and, and sort of just quality in, in everything they do. So I'm, I'm also looking forward to this, and I'm sure we all will be a little bit surprised with how it finally looks, but I, I predict it will be a very positive surprise. And as I said, they've shown a track record of being able to deliver things and do them right, do them professionally. So I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah, I know, Russ, I saw your hand. Scotty Jacobs has a very good reputation and is highly regarded in our community, and he's the SCA's artist in residence, and I have no doubt that Scotty will do a great job handling all this, as it's described here in the packet. Mr. Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I'm not opposed to public art. As a matter of fact, I've been a supporter of public art in Sagittuck for a long time. This particular situation, though, has a little, has me a little concerned because we spent a lot of time with the installation in Coughlin Park, some very nice graphics, some very nice pictures, representation of what it's actually going to look like in the scale, which I completely agree with and I support. Again, the size and scale of what's being installed over there has me a little concerned. We have not seen much of, and this was brought to the table at the last minute because of the fact that the SCA didn't understand that that was actually public property. So I kind of feel like we're moving into something that maybe might be a little bit overwhelming for the area, just based on the scale, the size of what's been presented. That's, that's where I'm coming from. It's a small area, and there's a lot of use of that area as compared to Coughlin, a lot of cars and so forth, and I just, little concerned about that. Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
To address Councilman Gardner's, one of your concerns, Scott Herbert did review the installation. This is the last paragraph on page 38, where it talks about the fact that there's a different landscape company that's managing the area. Scott looked at it, and as compared to Coughlin Park installation, he has no concerns.
All right, very good. Other comments or concerns? All right, with this, I believe it's a voice vote as well. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed?
No.
All right, so noted. All right, on to the next one, Maple Street Proposal. Mr. Manager?
All right, Maple Street, this is on page 49 of your agenda packet. So you had a healthy discussion as council at your workshop. Wendy is here. Thanks for coming back. So, I mean, what, so I, I made a recommendation based on my takeaways, which I, I place in bold. So just, I'm just going to run through them quickly.
Yes, please.
Okay, so receive further evaluation by engineer for alter, alternative solutions, and work with the other entities that are in the watershed. This is what we all talked about. And as far as, so that's for the creek issue. And as far as the North and Mason Street issue, just receive some temporary repairs, probably elevate that road a little bit with some asphalt, and study that a little bit more as well. And then as far as the entire roadway, delay that, have further conversations with the township, see if they will participate. Basically, this whole project gets some, placed on pause until we can investigate this a little bit more, which we will.
Okay, very good.
So no actions necessary. I don't have a recommendation for council at this point.
Okay, very good. And I, I appreciate the discussion we had about this on Wednesday. Yeah, everybody knows where I'm at on this. I want to make sure we go about it the right way, come up with a solution that's going to be longstanding, not a quick fix. All right, yes?
Ryan, do you have a timeframe in, in mind for number one? I mean, like 60 days, 90 days?
No, I don't.
Three years.
I don't, no. I mean, I, I don't. I would expect this to study within a year. I hate, I hate to give timelines because I just really don't know. I really don't.
Well, not, not when it's going to be finished, but maybe when it starts.
So we've already started studying this.
Okay.
Multiple ways, but we're going to study it more, and maybe bring some other eyes into this and see if we can find some other alternative solutions.
And you don't want to nail it down a little bit further, like 90 days, maybe I'll have a report.
But not do that, sir, no.
Well, I'll keep asking.
Every meeting, I'm ready for the question. I'll give you the same response.
Well, I hope not.
No, I don't. You know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I just want to work it into a, a schedule. I mean, I don't expect you just to drop everything and put that at the top of the list, but I do think that the council did kind of prioritize that option.
They sure did.
Yeah, I just want, I'd like to keep that in mind.
Understood, yes.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. So to that point, just more. So to that point, just more curious, it does say receive further evaluation by engineer for alternative solutions. Curious as to what some of those might be. Has there been any discussion about what those might look like in terms of for option one?
So as mentioned previously, the engineers, our current engineers have have studied this a few different ways. I don't have a good answer to that question as far as what the other options could be. I think there's many out there. But again, I don't want to give a timeline at this moment and I can't commit to, to much more than that. Except that we are going to study it, it's not going to get dropped and we're going to look at it.
I think it's okay to look at other options. And I think that's what's happening is we're looking at other options and studying it a little bit further with some different eyes on it.
Yeah, and 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 my question is more around what are some of those? I'm just more curious than anything else, having gone up there and now looked around a little bit. I'm just kind of curious what the engineers are thinking of aside from what has been proposed. And it's been well studied up to this point, but now that we look at some other alternatives, it's more of a discussion.
Yeah.
Not a concern, just more of a discussion.
Sure, it's going to be an ongoing discussion. We'll have to have the engineers weigh in on that, what the alternatives could be.
Yeah, yeah, I know John was on the other day and understood that we were asking for.
Yeah, could, could, yeah, I don't, I don't want to venture guesses.
Very good. All right, so no action necessary on that one. Next is Water Street Water Service Memo, also no action necessary.
That's correct, that's correct, Madam Mayor. So you have some detailed reports on this item, starts on page fifty-six, I do believe, fifty-five. So engineers' recommendation is do nothing at the moment, put this in the act, assessment management plan. And so no action in front of the council on this item.
Yeah, and the timeline for all of that, I mean, we're looking next year, April, I think we had several dates in here, final DSMI, first of January twenty twenty-five. And all problem service lines replaced by January first twenty forty-one. So there's, we've got quite a good timeline here to work with. Anybody else? And I, we know about the infrastructure number when it comes down, you have anything you want to say about that?
That's just what I was going, that's just what I was going to emphasize, Mayor, is, you know, with the budget supplemental, there is one point seven billion dollars for water system improvements, particularly things around the lead and copper rule. I went through F and V's last estimate, I think. Roughly based on what they did in twenty nineteen, that they reckon that maybe one out of four service lines with it within Sagatuck are of unknown material. So they very well could be lead. The criteria for the state drinking water revolving fund is is also being modified in in this latest action, which will put a greater emphasis in scoring on the presence of lead service lines. So I think this really speaks to the need to have a really solid, comprehensive asset management plan for the city's water, which means, you know, we need to work with, with Cal Lake to get a really thorough plan put together and submitted so we can, you know, score well when the state revolving fund opportunities arise. And as I said, there's going to be one point seven billion dollars that was approved on a bipartisan basis. So we should really put our best foot forward with with a, with a, with a, you know, a soup to nuts plan, if you will, you know, everything, the wish list, all of it. And really try to get a significant grant or loan to do not only these interconnections, fix these, but also fix lead service line issue. And there's really a lot of opportunity. This is, this is historic in the state. This investment in the state's water infrastructure is absolutely, absolutely once in a lifetime historic. And it's really incumbent upon this community and the other communities served by the water authority to, to seek this, this infrastructure funding.
All right, anything else on that? If not, we'll move forward to small cell application.
Right, here we go. This is on page sixty-four, and I think we have Miss Cindy Osmond on the line.
Yeah, I think Fred's on the line too, right? I think, yes.
All right, we discussed this at your workshop.
Hi Fred.
So Madam Mayor, maybe you just want to jump straight to the motion.
All right, yeah, we've been, actually, this might be our third reading on this, so to speak. So I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd love to do this one. Motion to approve the location of the proposed Verizon Small Cell Wireless Facility in the public right of way at one forty-seven Water Street on an existing replacement pole with a backup location at forty-four Water Street on a new utility pole.
All right.
Second, Leo.
Motion by Stanton, second by Leo. Any questions? Items for discussion? We've had a really good discussion about this, so it's pretty clear. Bring none? The voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Nice, very good.
Exciting.
Nice, nice job.
Congrats, Council.
Yes, very good.
Go ahead, yes, can I ask a question of Fred that doesn't really?
Yeah, go ahead.
Fred, are you on still?
Yes, I am still here.
Oh, great. Once again, thanks for all your time on this. Just curious, will we start seeing benefits when all three of these cell towers are in operation? Or when one or two go in, will we, will they immediately become active and will hopefully people start seeing some benefits?
It's my understanding that the technology that's being deployed is standalone. So as each is put online, you will see increased service. They don't play off of each other.
Great, thank you for that.
Great, thank you, Fred, really appreciate it.
You're very welcome, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, I did go over and have a tremendous hamburger at the restaurant.
Yeah, six hours, we're good on that.
They in terror.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's nice to be making this type of headway.
It was nice to hear that they, that this was, this community was one of their top priorities, as Fred mentioned last, the last minute.
Also just want to comment, thank Frank Morrow for his contribution as well, because he sacrificed a tree. And also wanted to thank Petter for us also going to replace that tree and fold. So I think it's a, as much as I hate to see a tree get chopped down for this, it's ultimately going to benefit the community and too is that we have some replacements coming, so.
Very good.
Yeah, the only thing to comment is I kind of wish that we had put some red tape around the trees that are really coming down. Because it appears that only one might be off on private property. Is that correct?
That's correct, one, one on the private property.
Yeah. And then Morrow's the one, their property's going to be trimmed. I think there's one that they own.
I think they're dropping that one.
Black walnut, I think.
It has walnuts that fall on things and damage things. They're not dent cars, I know it.
Not the most attractive.
All right, very good. Okay, we'll move on then, Wicks Park Bar and Grill License Agreement.
Madam Mayor, this is on page seventy-eight.
Gotcha.
And the motion is there for your approval or denial.
All right, pretty straightforward, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Make a motion, Mayor, to approve the license agreement as presented between the city of Sagatuck and WPBG LLC.
All right, motion by Leo, second by Dean, any discussion? All right, with that, this is a voice vote, all in favor, please say aye, yes.
Yes.
Aye and yes.
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, we are to the point of public comment, anyone who would like to get up and talk on any item, please introduce self, please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, very good, that correspondence, we have the expanded outdoor dining area application, we got one for already, which is nice from Copper Craft. That was good info, anything about that?
Take a look at it, it's different. You know, I will mention that the city given the unique uniqueness and coolness of this patio, the city is looking into a number of things, right? Safety, of course, life, life safety and welfare. So you're in good hands, we're checking all the things off.
All right, very good.
Just, I had asked Ryan earlier if we could just ask for some dimensions.
Yes.
And a map that shows where it is. Yeah.
It's got to be mentioned that Copper Craft was one of the pop-up patio businesses last year that we received a number of comments about the lack of use of that space. So it looks like they've done a great job in terms of coming up with a proposal.
Bit of an upgrade between.
Yeah. So I look forward to see what the city staff has to say about it. The only other concern I had about it was actually the roofing, so.
So we're looking at the Mecca shade, we're looking at the cell type material, we're looking at, like in life safety.
Sightlines for cars and pedestrians.
Absolutely. If a car clips one of those pillars, what's going to happen? So we're asking all the right questions as a city. I will mention just kind of as a city manager and an urban planner, this does fill a little bit of a gap, what we call like a missing tooth when you're walking the city. Where there's really no windows in that very lengthy building. And so this really activates a space which creates continuity a little bit away from the water on the, on the street and sidewalk. So we view this as a very good thing, just as long as it's, it's safe and obviously they're making a substantial investment, so that's pretty, pretty neat.
Still has to fit within the dimensions established.
Yep, absolutely, and they do, and they do. And we can send that information out, they absolutely meet all the dimensions that we put out there, so.
It's a four parking spaces.
Oh, sure.
I didn't see how many parking.
Cindy is still on the call, here she is.
Four, and look, I don't see how it could be anything less than four.
Cindy?
Yes, thank you. The dimensions of this space are thirty-two feet by fifteen feet, which fall within the parameter of the guidelines that were adopted. It will take up four parking spaces and it will be directly in front of the Copper Craft. If I can answer any other questions, let me know. We did get responses back from the designer on the safety issues and we're pretty well satisfied with those.
All right, that's why we hire you.
Yes, sir. Kind of somewhat related to this, you know, we've all, it's all on the plan to deploy the funds that we get from these, the site, the space leases toward improving the ability of people to get around town, interurban. Yeah, so when do you think we'll have an idea on like, you know, what, what the total revenue from leasing these spaces out and how best we can deploy this with, working within urban to, you know, help people get around in town and find a place to park?
So not really good with timelines, but. I would say in this one, because they want their pop-up patios by summer, right? We we know in about three months how much money we're working with for this go around this year.
And, and I didn't see in, and forgive me for not seeing when they plan on putting this out. Because obviously that makes a big difference on how much money the city is receiving, depending on how many months they're planning on using. Are they planning on using it the entire time? Okay, I missed it, sorry. So that's a good amount.
That is forty-eight hundred dollars we received from Copper Craft and we had other one, one other one that was issued. And I believe that that one was for twenty-four hundred dollars, so that's what we received so far.
All right, well, along those lines, would it be too much to ask by the end of May, perhaps, to just have a rundown of who? Who is? It'd be nice to see what we've got, who decided and what we're looking at.
Tracy Wally's is out already.
So Wally's is just on the sidewalk right now, they're not in the parking spots.
Oh, okay.
So they're, they're just in the sidewalk area, so that's just a, that's a different thing.
Sidewalk Cafe.
Sidewalk Cafe versus the, the on-street taking up parking spaces. And I don't know if Wally's is planning on still using the parking spaces.
Okay, and just as another point of information, the city is enforcing their outdoor ordinances as it relates to retail. So we saw shirts and sweaters and other retail out on the sidewalks, we're dialing, dialing that back in. So we've sent out a letter, Kate, who's wonderful, and Cindy. So we, we sent out a letter to businesses and so they're.
All right.
They're on notice.
I think at some point, obviously you can decide, it would be probably nice to alert the interurban folks that, you know, we're looking to devote a certain amount of money to helping improve the ability of visitors and residents to, you know, find a place to park and be able to move around the, the community with these spots, you know, going out of, out of action, you know, for extended period. So I think that'd be great, and particularly if it was something innovative, I mean, we've talked before about better signage, so people know about the opportunity at the high school parking lot, you know, the free shuttle, of course. But I've, I've always thought it would be really great to have some sort of, kind of, something that's more sort of catchy, that, you know, like a circulator, like a trolley, something, you know, that, that sort of people like, oh, this would be really fun to like, you know, this horse drawn carriage that goes around in a loop or this big trolley that's.
Yeah, Scott, I would, I would say the same thing, like, a lot of people don't see that the, you know, the pickup area is the high school because it's quite a ways away from the downtown area. If there were spots in town that was like a pickup spot, maybe three places in town that they stopped, 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 and they knew they could stand around in that location, they'd get picked up.
I would love like an open air battery, you know, electric trolley that just did a loop, you know, from the, from the high school parking lot, down, down water and back, you know, something, something that's green, something that's open, so people think, oh, this is actually fun to park up here and then hop on, hop off.
Get on the party bus.
Well, exactly, that's what it's like.
Parking party.
To invest in something like that, to rent something.
I think it's a joint effort.
Well, and at the very least, perhaps we could get the bus wrapped, we've talked about that.
With just some advertising, yeah.
Because that at least makes it sort of identifiable, graphic.
Yeah, it would be, be nice to have some metrics to show that, you know, by, by going this route and devoting this revenue to mass transit, that we actually had a greater uptick of people parking a little bit distant from the downtown. Use utilizing whatever kind of innovative solution we come up with in our urban to sort of make it more of a.
Yeah.
You know, attraction, if you will.
And, and speaking from an attraction side of things, like being able to talk to the star of Sagatuck and other attractions in town that have a lot of people, letting them know a little bit about the interurban portion of things. It's on our website, we try to, you know, promote that on our website, but I think other businesses probably could promote that on their website and say, hey, if there's no parking next to us, you can go to the high school and there's pickups every fifteen, thirty minutes.
I know the CVB's gotten.
It's free.
Good, it's good about advertising as well.
Yeah.
We need a TikTok.
Yeah, we need a TikTok on it. CVB has TikTok going.
Go on ahead, Russ.
I really, thank you, I really like Scott's idea about maybe having two or three different spots in town that actually would be a set spot for the shuttle to stop and drop people off. I'm not sure how they're doing it currently, but.
I think they do have two now, chain ferry and right here.
Okay, yeah, because, I mean, that's absolutely the best way to handle it, my, my experience. So I think that's good, just maybe a little better signage and put a sign up at the, unless there's a sign up at the high school too, I'm not sure if there's one up there.
There's a sign at the high school, there's banners.
It's very difficult to do this outside of the inner urban, only because of the, they're very, very strict insurance requirements by the state of Michigan, reliability insurance. If you have anything over a certain number of capacity, the requirements are really, really tough to get, you know, adhere to.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, Mark, I think that's why we, yeah.
Now whether we can help fund something, alternative use or something, what, you know. Phyllis can come up with, she's pretty creative.
All right.
There was one at, there was one at one time, do you remember that, Russ? It was the.
The trolley?
It was a train.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was old, you know, and.
Got about that.
Yeah. Yeah, it was.
Is that before the urban?
It was dangerous.
It was dangerous. All right.
No, it wasn't, it was a kind of a.
It was in addition to the. Yeah.
Yes. Okay, go ahead. Hi Brett. You have your hand up?
Just listening to the conversation that, this summer, there's going to be a lot of construction up at the high school, I'm not sure if that's going to eat away the. I just wanted to bring that to the.
Yeah, we got a notification from Tim Travis right about that, I know that was, as far as, he didn't anticipate that it was going to create that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Not that good deal.
Okay. I just let, I was just letting everybody know, because it was, looked like it was a pretty major on the one portion there. But, okay, I just, I gave it to those attention, too, so.
All right. Thank you.
Which also brings up a point about not just the city of Sagatuck, but also maybe partnering with Douglas, because they have a very expansive parking area. So people can actually pull in to the Hayworth parking area and/or other parts of Douglas and leave their vehicles there and catch a ride into city of Sagatuck. So.
So they do have a tendency to do in the old Calico spot.
Yeah. Lots of.
The owners are quite acceptable. It's all good. Okay, boards, commissions, and committee reports. Any reports, Mark?
We sent out the Cal Lake packet. There really wasn't much more to add to that. We did have election of officers, which we need by, bylaws is done every, every year. So Barry Johnson was re-elected as chair, Dan Ercart from Douglas as vice chair, and Chris Bernhardy, who is representing the township as Secretary of Treasure, Secretary of Treasure. We finally got delivered two of the generators that were ordered. It was kind of a surprise. I think that's in the packet, though. They all mentioned that, so they're happy about that. Need a little bit less running around when there's a electric failure, electric failure in the community. He's got two extra portable generators, which is a big deal for us, Cal Lake.
Follow. Sweeten.
Just, yeah, April first is winter. Yeah, so some last minute. We're in good shape.
Good.
Feeling, feeling confident and thankful to the community.
Great. Very good.
Or, nothing?
Okay.
Yeah.
Russ?
Planning Commission, just, and it was in the packet. We had a special meeting last Monday to approve a special land use permit for Wick's Park Bar and Grill with conditions. And I just want to say that I'm very humbled and proud of the planning commission for addressing an issue that was a bit problematic. And we had a lot of competing interests involved. And I just want to say that the planning commission, I thought, did a great job just walking through the issues. And Cindy did a fantastic job presenting information to us. And I think we came up with a good resolution for all the parties involved.
All right, council comments. Anyone?
None.
Anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do. Again, thank you for the comment regarding the zoning and sign violations. It was, people were taking advantage of the season already, so they did that. We're in front of that. The other thing that I did notice was there were some cornholes set up in the public sidewalk, crossing Butler Street in front of a restaurant down at Butler and, good large, Mason, excuse me. So blocking pedestrian traffic out in the street. So F Y I.
And the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Pump and Nichols?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sidewalk or on the, in the parking spaces?
Well, it was on the street, Butler Street.
Yeah.
So little dangerous, in my opinion. Also, too, I will not be here for the four-six workshop. I'll be out of town. Also, too, in some discussion from Commissioner Capanga as well as Scott, you know, there's been several announcements now from supplemental budget plans. Some communities, like Button Harbor's, already announced they're receiving forty-five million dollars. Of course, Sagatuck's not in line for that. But I'm wondering at one point, Will, is it all depending on the asset management program? Is that how it's determined? Or is there a set amount that every community is?
No, the, the state has Drinking Water Revolving Fund for, for grant loan opportunities. And when a community presents basically its, its, you know, its, its needs and its plan and its long-term asset management plan, it gets, it gets scored. I believe, and Mark can riff on this, too. But, you know, I, you know, we put in a bid for a grant. We didn't get it because we didn't score as high. There was like, you know, a, a small amount of, a few million for like over a hundred and forty systems that applied. It's, things have changed drastically. I mean, Eagle, which oversees, and, and is sort of the entity that passes through these grants and loans, their budget has nearly been tripled under this supplemental, this four point seven billion supplemental. So, you know, it's, as I said, it's a remarkable amount of money. The priorities are drink, are drinking water, waste, wastewater management, broadband, affordable housing. So, I mean, there's a few items there that have huge opportunities for this community.
And in regard to Russ's comment, on page fifty-eight of our packet, it was described clearly what had happened. December twenty twenty, the city submitted a drinking water asset management grant application to Eagle. And at that time, they had received approximately a hundred and forty million dollars in applications for a thirty-six and a half million available. And so those are the entities that are now getting wind of that money. This new announcement just came out. We haven't, no, I don't think any municipalities have been notified of what they're, what they'll be getting on that. So.
So, and that was my question was, you know, again, Ben Harbor's been probably the biggest one that's been out there, forty-five million dollars. And it's more than just water. It's other infrastructure needs and things of that nature. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, obviously, we've got our asset management plan that needs to be completed. I just didn't know if there's some kind of a program where they're actually setting an amount that each community is going to get based on just a formula, or is it's going to be solely based on our applying for the money?
It's application.
Yeah, I understand. That, that's a big deal.
Deadline of that asset.
That's.
You don't know yet.
Twenty-three? Or you don't like deadlines, but.
No, I know I don't.
This one, this one, we might have to pay attention to.
I don't know that we, we know. Not, I mean, the state just agreed to this bipartisan deal.
Thursday.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
But I mean, the asset, the asset management plan has to be submitted by June twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, this year, looks like the target completion date for the asset management plan, twenty-three, I think. Yeah, we, we, I don't believe we'll be ready to do anything.
Yeah, that's kind of.
There we go. Yeah, April twenty-three.
Our internal deal. But that's good timing.
It is very good.
But it really, I mean, Mark's, Mark's spoken very eloquently about, you know, there's a lot of lead service lines in this community. I mean, probably more than.
I'm looking around the house, the table, I mean, houses, people are in, probably most of us have lead service lines only because of the age of the infrastructure. And their street usually indicates whether you've had lead service, because they stopped installing those sometimes in the seventies, I think. So if you've had a new home built after that period of time, or if there was a water improvement project down the streets, it's that Lake Street probably doesn't have lead service. I'd be kind of surprised they would, because that's a relatively new main. But Campbell Road is just about every single home on both sides of the road at Campbell Road.
And the, the state used to allow partial replacements. So you, you know, only half of it would be replaced. And so you could, you could still, you could still have a stub of lead going into the house, you know. And now it's, it's on the, it's on the utility now to replace from the house all the way to the main, not a partial replacement.
All the way to the house, where you, yeah.
All right. Any other council comments? Mayor's comments, a couple of things. We had a night, a couple of nice notes from our colleagues in the municipalities regarding the training. And I thank everyone for attending. I found it very worthwhile. It's always a good refresher. I know that Jamie and Kate got a lot out of it. Having sat through a couple of the M M L trainings, it was, it really was a good refresher. I've also been trying to either in person or watching the recordings of all the commission meetings, which is really quite interesting. So it's been fun to just notice how the conversation goes and our role in those meetings. I think it's always good, personally, I think it's always good to let the commission, the body deliberate with our, without too much of our involvement or voting, because it ends up coming back to us at some point in time. So I think it's always wise to let the commission and the folks that we've chosen, chosen and appointed to those commissions do their job. Lastly, the Frig Community Recycling Committee, I think I informed you all the other day, we've had settled in on a household hazardous waste day event date, the twenty-fourth, from three to seven P M. And all that information will be coming out pretty quickly here in April. So.
That's May twenty-fourth?
May twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Yep, it's a Tuesday. I'm sorry, three to seven. We're at an hour. So.
And the spring cleanup is May second and third, right?
Second and third. All right. Very good. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Very good. Okay.
Who gave me this stretch?